All right. Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the May 11th, 2021 work session of the Forsyth County Board of Education. If you would all stand as you're able for the pledge of allegiance. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any necessary changes?
No recommended changes.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Lindsey. All in favor. That's unanimous. And just for the record, Mr. McCall had a conflict this evening, so we'll call all the votes unanimous if there's four of us. All right. First up tonight is presentation and discussion, and the first one is board policy IED scheduling for instruction with Mr. Tim Heiser.
Good afternoon. So the highlighted portion of this policy was brought over from the accompanying regulation, meaning it was what we were already practicing. The one change is from, our significant change is the ninth through 11th graders, where we've reduced the minimum number of courses per semester from seven to six, keeping the maximum number at seven. Are there any questions regarding this policy?
Only thing I had. Well, what is a secondary student? What does that actually mean?
So that applies to the middle school and high school students. So that's why the table below begins with sixth grade, because this was originally written regarding our FVA students, to capture what constitutes a full-time virtual student.
Okay, thanks.
I thought it was eight. No?
No, it's six to, so it's not elementary, so six to 12, right?
No, 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 eight. I thought it was eight.
Oh.
Is that different credits versus courses?
That's different. So, yeah, that was a different item on the high school improvement committee agenda. This is simply what constitutes a full-time student.
Got it.
So then since that's a change in policy, that will sit out there for a month, and they'll bring it back. So they'll be on the website for the public to review and give us any feedback.
Okay.
All right. And next we have board policy JBCD transfers and withdrawals.
Okay, so this one is the minor change, the highlighted section there. And this is regarding, the change is regarding automatically withdrawing a student after ten, missing 10 consecutive days unexcused. And we changed the wording from shall to may. And so that allows that additional flexibility based on the individual circumstances of the student, especially when considering virtual students and travel that might be involved. So that change simply provides that flexibility for the principal to look at those circumstances. And you can see, we've also referenced our board policy JV student attendance.
So virtual, especially for, say, an FVA student who could potentially be needing a longer?
Right, because historically, so if we're looking at our face-to-face students and the student doesn't show up at school for 10 consecutive days unexcused, then we would withdraw that student at that time. When we're thinking about our virtual student, if you're a full-time virtual student, you might be traveling with your family, and you're still logging in and engaged in your coursework. So depending on that situation that that student finds him or herself in, this allows us to look at that, investigate that situation before the automatic withdrawal.
I'm surprised we haven't had to do that sooner.
Yeah, and, well, with COVID and the number of students taking classes virtually, it really came up a lot this year. And so for our principals, they just needed more flexibility than what the policy was currently granting them.
Makes sense. All right, so same thing, this will sit then.
Correct.
All right. That wasn't easy. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Tim.
Next, we have the bid process with Mr. Brad Richardson. Actually, we have the whole team. That's right. Larry Hamel.
Have some backup.
Matt Work.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to be here to speak about bid process. In fact, I kind of took the liberty to expand that to contracting in general, because bidding is one of the ways that we reach contract. So I kind of thought it'd be a good idea to maybe go through all of the general overview in Wicken Park and anywhere that we would have any questions about it. And I also wanted to hit on some key points about contracting that I thought might be of interest, if I can find. Sandy, where would I? Oh, I got you. Apologize. So for purposes of today's conversation, we'll define contracting as the processes and methodologies that are utilized to procure goods and services for the, for the school system. Most commonly known of these types of processes are competitive solicitations, which is your invitations to bid, requests for proposals, or sometimes you'll see a bid or RFP in competitive quotes. We'll also use state contracts or cooperative contracts. You may see that language sometimes in our request when we present it to you. Negotiated contracts, that's a hybrid type contract I'll talk about in a minute. Soul source and some other methods. Couple of points of clarification. Contracting for construction is very similar to the principles that I'm going to talk about today. Sometimes there's some distinctions, but the principles are the same. Matt's here if there's anything specific about construction. But the highlight of, the focus of my conversation with you today is to talk about goods and services. And also departments have the autonomy to do their own contracts, but they're subject to the purchasing policies and procedures. Oftentimes, we help them, if not with all of them, with most of them, if not all of them. Competitive solicitations in general, the first area that we will talk about today is when a contract exceeds $50,000 in aggregate annual spend. That kicks it into a formal solicitation. Typically, that'll be a situation where it's either one large project or purchase or a process that leads us to an annual contract. As you see here, one example would be the bus air conditioning retrofit that we did a couple of years ago. That was a specific project. It was very large. We bid that out, or actually did a proposal for that. Versus bus tires, which is a large contract, but it's more of an annual, ongoing, as-needed type purchase. So there's some distinction there. Both a bid and an RFP have a formal set of solicitation documents, a little bit thicker, terms and conditions, a little bit more legalese. Both are publicly posted, all the way from the announcement of the solicitation through the tab sheet. We're one of the few districts that I'm aware of in the metro area. There are a few that post as much as we post publicly, all the way down to the tab sheet. We just feel like it's good practice to be as open and transparent as we can on that. Most often in a competitive solicitation, the needs are generated by an internal department. I call them our customers or the end user. So transportation or food and nutrition or facilities will have a need, and we'll engage with them to help them find a contract to meet that need. As such matter experts, they have the autonomy to specify what they're looking for. We help them write the specifications and put it in into a process. We facilitate the process, document, record key, retention, bring the contract to the board if applicable. But there are some differences between bids and RFPs, and I think that's important because sometimes RFP is used anonymously with bids, and people will say, listen, we need to do an RFP for this or an RFP for that. Sometimes it's really a bid, and that's more than just the geek speak of my particular niche of the world. It's, there are some differences. For example, in a bid, that's a situation where we know the product, we're able to clearly write and define what the need is, measurable. An RFP is often when it's a service or a product that also has a service element to it, where we want to be able to examine more than just cost. So non-cost is a, is a large part of what we're looking at. We may want to examine the qualifications of the vendor, their relevant experience, their staff, the resumes of their team, their methodology, warranty, service support. We may want to demo the product or test it. Most often, we'll bring them in for a presentation, have some interaction, and also negotiation. In a hard bid, it's open publicly. It's read and announced. So the cost is not negotiable, because it's already been, excuse me, been announced. But in an RFP, it closes, and the elements of it aren't public until we reach a conclusion. An RFP is evaluated by committee. So in a situation like with the bus AC retrofits, a good example, our team met with Mike Satterfield's folks, and we reviewed it together and scored it, looked at cost and non-cost elements. Cost is not always the sole determinant when you're doing it, when you're looking at a proposal. You want to be able to examine a little bit more. I kind of joke sometimes, if I'm bidding for skydiving or bungee jumping, I don't necessarily want the cheapest contract that I can find. I want to be able to examine it and make sure that it's the product that, or the service that we need best. And that's the goal of an RFP, is to find that value. In a bid, it's more often where there's a very clear spec, and the lowest, the lowest offer wins. You'll see us, you'll see us when we bring the request to you. We'll use the language lowest cost, responsible and responsive bid or meeting our terms and conditions. You'll see that sometimes. So in a bid, that's saying, it's the lowest offer that we received that's responsible. That means that we vetted them and make sure that their references checked out, that we believe that they can actually perform the work. And responsive means that they responded to the document. They gave us all the forms and filled out everything that we needed. So that's responsible and responsive. In an RFP, you'll see language that says highest scoring, responsible and responsive offer, because we also try to score the non-cost with the cost. And cost is not always the, the lowest cost doesn't always win the RFP. It's great when it does, and often it does, but we want to be able to look at both. A written quote is another form of solicit, another competitive solicitation. It's less formal than a bid, but it's very, very much similar to a bid and structure.
So someone could have the lowest bid, but let's say they didn't complete all the paperwork properly. They didn't show their insurance or whatever. They could be disqualified because they didn't complete everything, even though, but they might have the lowest bid.
Correct. That would be responsiveness. So if we required immigration documents, which actually the state requires insurance, they don't fill out certain parts of the document. They don't, if we, if we say that, if we specify certain, the warranty needs to be 12 months, and they offer six months, and, so there are things that can disqualify it initially like that. Yes, ma'am?
Because you can't compare them apples to apples, then, if they're not all, they don't give you what you need.
That's correct. In an RFP, we have a little bit more latitude that we can go back and forth with them and say, did you, did you accidentally omit this, or can we talk about this? Like if there's, if we really believe that that's the right path for us to go.
I think a great example of that, Brad, was the broker RFP we did a half ago, almost. Because that went on for almost six months.
It did.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, what would be the, an example of an RFP versus, like a situation where you would do an RFP versus?
We have had the same broker for almost 20 years. We decided to go out and do the broker RFP.
For the investing?
No, the broker would be for insurance products.
Okay.
And we did it, and we came down to three final teams. And we did the first interview, a second interview, and then we did the final interview and brought down to two. And that took us about six months.
Wow.
Brad was part of that panel, as well as myself and three other people on my staff. And it worked out pretty well. It was a drawn-out process, but I think we finally got the person we needed.
What warrants responsible? Like, do you have a list of things that they, the criteria they have to meet to be considered responsible?
It's a little bit subjective. We want to make sure that we believe that they are capable of doing it. References is one of the key. If we check the references and they don't come back at all, and we can't find anything on them, or they come back negative. The other, another example of responsibility would be, when I was with Cobb County Schools years ago, we did a bid for, to buy computers, like desktop computers. And the company that was low at the time, the volume that they were going to purchase was more than they had bought in the previous 12, that company had sold in the previous 12 months. So we had reason to be concerned that, could they really fulfill this in a timely fashion? Because time and other things. So it is subjective sometimes. It's not often that somebody is disqualified responsibility, but it's, it is a possibility.
And isn't that a situation we're kind of getting into now more often, as we become a larger system? I think in the last couple of years, you've mentioned before, that some of the vendors we've used for years have reached the point that they can't, can no longer, I think it kept happening maybe with the air, the filters for their air conditioners, whatever, that they could no longer handle our load?
That's a good example, is our filter company that we use for, they actually approached us and said, you guys are growing too fast. We cannot keep up. So they said, we'll be, we cannot continue under the current contract because it's costing us too much money. So we had to go back out and resolicit that. They rebid on it, but that is the beauty of having that contract, is because no matter how we grow, they have it there. Now, this company was very honest and said, hey, we can't give you the quality. So we put it back out for, for another bid, and we had to go with a different company. But going back to what you said earlier, we do that all the time in construction, too, is we don't want someone that's only done, you know, an office renovation to build a 90-some-million-dollar high school. So there, you go back to volume that they've had, what current projects do they have, their financials. I mean, we, we dig very, very deep into all of our contracts because we can't just, because you got a great portfolio doesn't really mean you can actually perform and do the job that we need you to do.
Okay, thank you.
In general, Ms. Adams, I think you'll see a lot of the RFPs are service-related, where non-cost really matters more than just cost. A lot of you just buying widgets would fit more in bid. That's, that's kind of general, but that's, that kind of breaks it down a little bit as well. We also use state contracts and cooperative contracts. Sometimes we look at those on a case-by-case basis. There are certain state contracts that are, that are beneficial to us. Buses is one that makes a lot of sense for us to use. There, sometimes we buy vehicles. Sometimes we feel like we can beat the state if we solicit ourselves, so we look at it on a case-by-case basis. Cooperatives are the same way. Those are, are contracts that have been solicited through by another entity, and they can satisfy the requirements of our policy because they were competitively solicited in an open environment. And the burden is on us to make sure that we go in and look at those contracts and feel like they were, their reput, that's why I put, I think on the other page, reputable cooperatives, is because we do look at them and make sure that it's, that it's a contract that we would, that we would be able to stand behind, align with our goals, and we check market pricing and things as well. It's not meant to be the easy way. It's meant, sometimes it's an expedient way. Sometimes it makes sense to do it that way, and we try to look at it on a case-by-case basis. The next one is like a hybrid. It's a negot, what I call a negotiated contract. This is a semi-formal process. An example I can give of you is, for this is, is science tables recently. We refreshed all the science tables in our middle schools. And it's very difficult without an engineer, furniture engineer, to write specifications on a science table to build a custom table. Can you get an apples-to-apples comparison on all the tables? But everybody who sells a science table is on some type of state or cooperative contract. So what we did is, we did a semi-formal process where we invited them all to bring their table to us. We demonstrated it. We evaluated. We looked at costs. We negotiated. That led us to a contract. So that's kind of a hybrid of this cooperative. Like, we didn't just go find the first one we could see and award it. We still used a process to find the product that we felt was best for the need, but it was awarded underneath a cooperative. And there's times where you'll see us request a soul source. That's where there's only one provider that we can find it from. There are some other exceptions to these. Sometimes federal funds require certain types of solicitation that might supersede what we would do normally. Grants, USDA, sometimes there's additional things that we have to consider when we make those decisions. The contracting process in general, these are just some highlights I felt were, might be beneficial. We currently manage about 80 annual contracts. When we started about 15, 16 years ago, I think there were less than 10. So we're growing. These are the contracts that are in place for our schools and departments to use on a day-to-day basis.
Can you name a few, just to give us an idea, like some typical bigger ones, like?
Food, school supplies, musical instruments, a lot of contracts for Matt, for carpentry and electrical and plumbing. And so some of them are product contracts, some of them are service contracts. Some of those pooled contracts that you see, where it'll be three or four contractors in a particular trade, for example, that they can pull from as needed.
We have, we have a perfect example. We have, I'll just use plumbing as an example. We have two contracts, Amos Plumbing and another, I can't remember the name of the other one, which is funny, because they actually, we had a water main break in the other day. We had to call to get that done quickly. The great point about having these contracts is I already have these two companies under contract where their service rates are guaranteed. I can't, they can't raise the cost on me. And why you want to have multiples is because, one, we called, since I can be there at some point next week. Well, that doesn't work for us. The other company we called, they said, I'll be there today if you need it today. If not, I can be there Monday morning. So their rates are already set for us. We don't have a wide variety, but normally each trade or each industry for us has about two or three. And it's great, because like I said, those rates are set, and we don't have to worry about that. For, because everyone wants to, now, especially now, when everyone wants to raise the cost on you, our rates are set.
And you can budget, because you know about, you know about, generally speaking, how many things happen a year.
Yes, I do love that.
Yeah, I was just saying, yes.
But in addition, we already have their insurance on file, the immigration documents filed, the other things that we would need to have to rush to try to do. He can just, he can just use one of those contracts if it makes sense for him. In addition to that, we probably do 15 or 20 other solicitations over the course of the year for, for projects that aren't annual, that just department or school may have a need for. And over 200 informal quotes a year where our staff at school or departments just needs a few things that are maybe under the, under the competition thresholds of a formal solicitation, we try to assist with as well. We currently assist every department and most schools in some form or fashion with, with helping them reach contracts. One of the topics that comes up often in our, in our industry is when to renew and when to resolicit, when and why and how, and how do you make those decisions? It honestly is a case-by-case basis. One thing I would say, with 80 annual contracts, you honest, you could not resolicit them all in a year if you wanted to, without greatly increasing the staffing. A formal solicitation can take minimum three or four weeks, but it can take three or four months. And it's, it's very involved in the, in the process. But as a general rule, even more so than that, when we're in a good contract and the, it's working for the, for the end user, and the pricing is right, and the service is right, and we've already kind of crossed that learning curve that two entities have when they begin to do business together with one another, sometimes it makes sense to renew. Sometimes it makes sense to resolicit. There's some contracts that we resolicit every year, even though we can renew, and some we try to renew as often as possible. And there's, there's no fixed rule. We look at it on a case-by-case basis. So what would happen, when the contract would be coming close to the end of renewal, my staff reaches out to, say, Matt's staff, and says, hey, this contract's coming up. Do you want to renew it? Do you want to talk about it? Sometimes it's like, yes, but we would like to fix this and this, and we'll bring them in. If we can reach, reach something that makes sense, that's mutually agreeable to both parties, we'll renew. If not, we'll resolicit. So.
Is there a set time, like, say, after five years, we have to go and say, okay, anybody else that may want to?
Yes. We typically renew, we strive for most of our contracts being one year with, with renewables, up to four years. So it would be a five-year, in essence, a five-year term, but they're really five one-year terms. Every once in a while, you'll see a technology contractor or internet or something where it's advantageous to do multiple years.
But after five years, it will go out no matter what, to give anybody that might say, I can do it for a lot less, or whatever?
If it's, if it's a competitive process. And there's, there's times where, if we find a new person in the market or something, we may say, hey, we want to resolicit next year anyways, even though we're in a good contract, because this may be, this may be good. We truly try to look at them each individually, because markets change.
Very regular, we did that, where a plumber stops and says, hey, I can help, you know, I'm available and local. And we say, well, when our contract comes up, we'll definitely look at putting you into our pool. One, going back to every year, is the natural gas. That makes total sense to do that every single year, because we can get, the rates are so flexible. So we tell Brad, every year, we want to put this out. It's work on us, but we think that's one that obviously needs to get done. But putting out a plumbing contract or a landscaping contract every year is just not.
Well, landscaping is a good example. And I think, like, I know another work I do, like, house, like, cleaning has been another one. Like, during COVID, that's one that if you had a good deal, you maybe not wanted to re, to go out again, because price of cleaning supplies and things like that went up. So some things, because of COVID, you kind of did want to toe the line and maybe not go back out to bid, because you know the price would go up. And if the existing guy was willing to keep the price where it was at, it was better to go another year. So COVID kind of added a different twist, from what I understand.
It certainly added a lot of twists in a lot of ways. And that's a good point, because resoliciting doesn't always lead to a better deal. Sometimes a vendor will hold a price that he would prefer to go up on, but he doesn't want to throw it to the market because he might lose if it goes back to the market. So he may stay, I've had him say, I really need to go up, but I'm not going to go up, because I'm afraid what might happen in a resolicit. So it, sometimes it actually works to our, often it works to our benefit. And that's part of the analysis that we try to do when we look at things. When we renew, we do our best to go see, what's the market doing? We're kind of aware of certain market conditions, but sometimes in specific sub-markets, we'll try to figure out, we'll look at tab sheets from other school districts who bid things recently, to see where, where they're coming in, to see if it would make sense to redo it. We try to do some analysis. Right now, the cost of everything is up. So locking in current pricing makes a lot of sense now. That may not be the case 12 months from now. We'll, we'll look at it.
As to Darla's point, is, is that a state set for schools?
The state sets the, on the five-year, yes, ma'am. That's a state.
Yeah, because that's one of the things. I get emails from people, I know, whenever I'm doing this, and why don't the school use local people? And they don't put it out, and they just got one guy that's been doing it 20 years, and so this is good. So now we know, we can tell them it does go out, even if they renew it yearly at five years, it goes out.
Yes, ma'am. I can assure you, everything that runs our department is in line with what we've said.
And it seems like this year, a lot of the contracts have kept the same, maintained the same, at least from what I've seen.
Which is good for, good for Larry.
Yes, and again, it's very good for budgeting purposes. It's very good to where, if we can renew, yes, this was a year that, hey, would have been a risk to go out. Yes, we had, you're up for a renewal, but we decided to stay with what we had, just because we knew going out last year was totally, it was a crapshoot. So we renewed a lot of, a lot of contracts, just to make sure that we knew we kept going for another year.
You see my note about, I know I'm pressing on time, but I want to be available for as much.
We asked, this is, this is a topic we wanted to understand better, and we get questions on, so this is worth it.
I'm willing to talk as much or as little as you want, so.
Oh, this is good.
Yeah, because we do get lots, I get lots of questions.
I do understand that. And anytime I'm available to talk to you about a specific, if that makes sense. You know, I want to mention strategic partnerships regarding resoliciting. There's some, we've been the beneficiary of having some long-term relationships with folks, not at the expense of not following policy and procedure. Example is last year when COVID hit. PPE was very hard to come by. Cleaning supplies was very hard to come by. Because we had a long-term relationship with a custodial vendor, we were at the top of their shipping list. There were other people that were willing to pay for more than our contracted price, but they honored that, and we got the product and other people didn't. So I say strategic partnerships, sometimes it makes sense. Furniture right now is another great example. You know, you guys have approved our request for Scholarcraft as a standardized classroom furniture. And right now, classroom furniture is a, is a really difficult product to get. There are, there's more orders trying to be placed than, than product that can be sold. And the other thing is raw goods and raw materials, which is my next point. Manufacturers can't keep up with demand. Scholarcraft has us among three, two, two other districts and us at the top of their board, and we're guaranteed to get products this summer for our three, for our three buildings, and there's other orders that they're not taking. There's benefit sometimes in building these partnerships and relationships, as long as you don't violate the principles of what you're trying to accomplish. I think, I think it's possible to do both, and we've certainly benefited from both of those. Which is the next slide. Just, I want to just throw it out there. Current, and everybody knows it. I mean, look at the gas pumps today. National and global market supply chains are as volatile as I've ever seen them. There's no one reason. It's just a, it's a confluence of a lot of different things that's happening. You know, COVID, national, international politics, policies, raw material, lumber. Fire has devastated some of the lumber yards, and in addition to all the, we know about the other things that's going on with lumber. You know, Tom and Matt could speak to even more, more to this. Labor is a big problem. A lot of people want to make products and sell products, but they can't find the labor to do it. There's just an unforeseen demand also. And I was talking to one of our suppliers, because of the government sending a lot of money back down to school systems, they have money, some of these school systems have money they've never had, and they're all trying to buy furniture. Some school systems.
It's down schools.
Don't get us going.
Try not to get you going on that one.
In the state of Georgia, there's $3.9 billion that school systems have to spend statewide.
Don't get me going.
And they're all trying to spend it between the now and the 30th of 2023. That's a lot of money to spend.
So I've got relationships with vendors that, that are calling me, saying, there's people I've never heard from before that won't, want to buy, but, but I'm honoring yours and your price. And they could, they could sell them for more. So we appreciate those relationships. And I don't want to say we reward them by giving them special benefits, but we do take that in consideration on the renew solicit conversation sometimes, as long as we feel like it's market-priced and everything else is.
Well, you mentioned it.
Practically correct, I think.
Yes, ma'am.
For them to honor that. And so I think that's, that's a testament to the companies that you selected, who now have to go.
It does, it confirms that you made a good decision sometimes. And sometimes it confirms that you may not have made a good decision. But we've, we've been fortunate in, in these key partnerships that I've mentioned today, that we've been the beneficiary of it over the last year and a half.
You mentioned the PPE earlier. I don't remember what meeting it is. It was a long time ago. It might have been the large systems. But there was a school system that mentioned, this was a year ago now, that they didn't think they're going to be able to open on time because they were time because they were not able to get the PPE. And I know that we were able to stock up on it from the get-go because of what you just said, so that makes a difference, it could make a difference between school opening and not opening. That's huge.
It really could, and furniture this year, we placed our furniture orders before we left for Christmas break this year. Lead times, it would normally be six or twelve weeks, we place six months in advance. I couldn't foresee this, but we were just concerned of volatility, and, and we're still going to be cutting it close on a few line items. We're, we're going to fill up our schools, but there's, there's a few school systems that are, are going to open new buildings this year without furniture. There's just not, it's just, there's, I was talking to one of the manufacturers, the legs for a particular table come from overseas, a country overseas in the Far East, and they're sitting on containers of these legs, trying to use it as a negotiating tool with our current administration, and, you know, our schools are going to suffer because of certain things like that. So, but we're, we're in good shape as of now. I just wanted to mention volatility, because there may be some, some things here or there that, that do come that are unforeseen, but I feel like we're in a strong position moving in. Again, I wanted to make a note that, about construction, they, they are, their principles are very similar, but there are some distinctions there. In conclusion, I would just say a couple of things. We use the word stewardship, and I think it's important to understand that, that for a wise steward, it's a value proposition. The goal of any contract should be to, to find the optimal, optimal solution, the best value. Cost may not be the primary determinant, our, it's our charge to find where that point crosses where value and, and cost intersect, and we really strive to do that. Sometimes we learn a lesson the hard way, but that, that's our goal. That being said, we do not abandon the principles of good stewardship, responsible use of taxpayer funding. We understand that we're stewards of funds that are not ours, and we're appreciative of, of giving, giving that opportunity. And that includes being equitable in our interactions with the marketplace. The marketplace doesn't understand what we do and why we do, but we, we certainly do try to be as equitable as we can. Our first fiduciary duty is to the district, but that doesn't mean that we don't care about the way we interface with the market. We certainly do. And the other thing I would say is, is what we do is not a one-size-fits-all approach. I think it's, it would be convenient if we could say, this, this model works, and we're going to cram every, all a hundred contracts into this particular model, but it just doesn't work that way. So what we really try to do is, is analyze each, each situation individually and select the method that best fits that particular need. At that particular time, what worked three years ago may not work in, in current markets. So that, that, that's on us to try to figure that out. And these, these different topics that I've talked about today are what, you know, to use a vernacular that's overused probably as tools in the toolbox, but those are the things that we can use to try to reach best value for, for our end users. Understanding that ultimately, we're supporting those folks that are, that are doing the hard work, which is teaching. Everything we do is driven toward making sure we give them the best tools to do what they need to do.
I'm sure we do, you know, over the years, I've watched this process change, you know, whether it's internet providers and, you know, sometimes common sense doesn't, on the surface, seem right. So sitting them up for State County Chair, you know, we go buy a van or something, it's easy to say, well, just put it on the street to one of our vendors here and buy a van. And, you know, we have state contracts that are available to us at a good price, and we may be buying a van from South Lake, somewhere down south by the town, and you're just like, what does that mean? And so, you know, quantity of purchase at a state level is a lot more beneficial to us. So you have to kind of look deeper into the understanding of what we buy, will we buy, and it doesn't always on the surface make sense.
That's a good point. And half our money does come from the state, some, some, some years.
Yeah. But they have some good deals.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And again, that's why it's a case by case basis, we, we try to approach it as a case by case basis.
And we've seen the market change with internet services. We started back in the day with Adelphia, and we moved into Comcast, and then we moved into TNT, and, you know, it's good to have multiple vendors in these cases. So we've morphed and changed in arenas where we, you know, have to source it and go for the best price and try to use our E-rays and everything else to our advantage, and they do a good job of that. So it's kind of hard, not all the topics that we're doing exactly right.
How many, how many years you been doing this, Mr. Richardson?
Here, fifteen years here.
I was a young man last year.
I don't think my hair was quite this gray, and I can't decide whether it was children or, or this stuff, but no.
Well, we won't edit up the years between all three of you, but this is, this was really helpful. Does this answer a lot of people's questions? I know it helps when we get questions, so we can refer to this, and people have, thank you so much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Really appreciate it, thank you. All right. Next, we have Forsyth Teacher Academy update with Michelle Dugan.
Good afternoon. Excited to share a few updates on the Forsyth Teacher Academy for this year. We do believe that the Forsyth Teacher Academy overlaps and feeds into the goals of teaching the whole child and also effective and efficient financial planning, but also as far as our diversity and inclusion goals, it's that staff capacity piece along with culture and climate. Just a reminder that the Forsyth Teacher Academy is comprised of three main programs. So there's induction and mentoring, which is the service and supports of our newest educators to the field, all of our endorsements that we offer through the academy, and also our Georgia TAP program. And that's our alternate route to certification, and Georgia TAP stands for Georgia Academy of Teacher for Preparation and Pedagogy. Of course, we can't do this work in a vacuum, we certainly don't do it alone, and so we have an incredible advisory board, as you can see, who gives us great feedback that we elicit from the schools, from the school community, the families, and so on. And just a moment to thank the board, obviously from a few years ago, Dr. Bearden, Dr. Salome, and Dr. Abear are dean of the Forsyth Teacher Academy for having the foresight to see how this would fill the needs of our schools throughout our system in the coming years. So we'll talk first about induction and mentoring. Our induction plan in Forsyth County schools follows the Georgia Department of Education's guidance for teacher and leader induction. These are personalized supports that are very specific to each educator. So for a brand-new educator out of a program or out of college, they receive supports through their first three years with different topics, based on where they are, meeting those professionals where they are, and moving them through their employee lifecycle. And then also, if they are new to our system, but they are a veteran employee, we give them a year worth of support, kind of show them the Forsyth County way, and give them any additional support or resources that they may need. One of the ways that we support our induction leaders and administrators in this county is through our retreats. We have three retreats a year, so one in the fall, one in winter, and then one in the spring. Last year, in 2020, we decided to continue to have our spring induction retreat, although our students were learning from home, and we were so fortunate that we do have an LMS in its learning where we could facilitate that same group engagement, same interaction, and just use and model the strategies that our teachers were going to use with their students. So we had a retreat online through its learning. We thought that 2020 would be a good time to have a circus theme, so that worked out very nicely for us. And then continuing our journey was a theme for this winter retreat. That's really ongoing professional learning for all of our leaders in induction. We had just under three hundred new certified hires last year, and a hundred and six designated induction leaders who support them in addition to their own mentors. So this is an incredible network of people who support our new educators. Of course, some of the best days of the year are the first days of school, but also our NEO, which stands for New Educator Orientation. So all of our induction leaders come together to support their new hires for two days prior to pre-planning. On day one, that's school-based time, they're getting to know their administration, their campus, and for most of our new folks, that's when they get to go into their classrooms, which is their favorite part. Day two, of course, is that amazing collaboration with the Communications Department, who have the fabulous district welcome, which of course was online this past year, many of you were involved in that, but again, that same personal feeling we were able to keep. And then they head back to their schools in the afternoon for school-based time. We're really excited this year, two of our departments, and really departments across the county, were able to work together to create a website for professional learning, just a one-stop shop where all of our educators can go to get their information. From the human resources side, that means that our new hires can go directly to a page, say I'm a new educator, and see both the required and the optional professional learning that is available to them before their official employment even begins.
Do you have any data that tracks comment, actually click on that or go to that?
So this is brand-new this year, thanks to Mike Evans and Leanne Rice, but yes, we will be able to track who completes which trainings. We did that previously, we had another program that we used, PD Express, and we had also used things like Google completion forms to automate certificates that went out for professional learning completion, but we just feel like having everything in one spot, and it's all departments, transportation, leadership, so it'll all be in one spot.
So that's a lot of people that were hired after the job fair, and like we have been told a lot, there are just be like, kind of anxious, and see if they want to get their hands on something.
There will be nobody more excited to get their hands on some professional learning than teachers who are coming to our system. They'll email me the moment they get hired sometimes, and reply to my email and say, is there any, can I preview a book, or, or can I go to your login? And I'm like, yes, yes, in, in good time. But that speaks to the quality of educators that we bring into our system as well. We also house endorsements, in addition to the partnership endorsements that we have through our partners, the Forsyth Teacher Academy has two endorsements that have been running for a couple of years now. One is ESOL, so that's English for Speakers of Other Languages, supporting our students who are engaging with English as a non-primary language, and it's giving really good professional learning for teachers who want to strengthen their skills there, as well as online teaching, which was certainly excellent that we've had that in place for a couple of years. That program has certainly grown, as you might imagine, and we opened up two to three more classes to be able to support the need in the system. This year, the Georgia Professional Standards Commission approved two new endorsements under our Forsyth Teacher Academy umbrella, so both K-5 mathematics and teacher support and coaching.
So you said the Georgia approved this, so at least they put different costs into new, and these are still sort of, maybe valid other places, so they were just not real likely to live here, but they're still valid if they go to another place?
Yes, that's exactly right. So we are an education preparation provider through the Forsyth Teacher Academy. We have the same rights and responsibilities as a college, a university, or say a RISA, to award initial certificates, but also to offer endorsements that will be added to their base certificate, that they can take anywhere with them, and also out of state if it's a reciprocity state. Yeah. And then I'll talk about our Georgia TAP Alternative Certification folks. So these are my people, I'm very proud of them. These are folks who are coming to us with a degree in something that is not education. They are making the transition from industry into education. This is actually the route that I took to become a teacher, and I'm thankful that it was there. Like I mentioned earlier, we have those same standards and responsibilities as a college or university, so there's rigorous admissions standards are there. The great thing about Georgia TAP is a lot of our folks who have great experience in industry can't afford the time or the money to take off a year to two to come back to be a teacher. So this allows them to make that transition, they're coming with the content knowledge, we pick up the pedagogy piece, the instructional strategies, the ethics, and so on, so that they can move right into that classroom more easily, and it is one of the most affordable ways to become a teacher in the state of Georgia. You'll see today that we have incredibly high-quality candidates apply with us. Part of our partnership and part of the way we serve schools is limiting our certification to only our high-needs areas. So the subject areas you see here are statewide, nationally, and certainly locally, generally harder to fill areas, K through 12 for special education, secondary math and science, and some of our CTAE fields. I've got a great partnership with CTAE, Dr. Lowe, we are able to talk all the time and find the best candidates the right spot, so they can bring that industry information into our schools. This is just a general timeline of what it might look like. Most folks complete within eighteen months, and that's continual professional learning and development as they are completing our program. One of the ways we ensure continuous improvement is not only talking with our Forsyth Teacher Academy Advisory Board, but also communicating regularly with our building leaders. And so I grabbed just a few quotes, I had more, from principals who just wanted to share that this program meets the needs of their schools. We just welcomed our third cohort at the beginning of this year, so as you can see, we're masked up, ready to learn. These are our newest cohort three, they are in their first year, or ending their first year rather, they've been a fantastic group, just want to show them off. And then going forward, new for cohort four is something that we're really excited about. We think we are the only provider, to our knowledge in the state, that offers a discount for military personnel and veterans. So this is just to ease that transition, to honor and also recruit folks who have that great military background and skill. My husband is an educator, but he's also a, a United States Army, National Guard for twenty years. So we are excited to be able to offer this, just as one more way to ease that transition into education for military families. So we have our celebrate, I am going to share our cohort two completers with you here today. This is my, my squad, I put 2019, so everyone would know when this photo was taken, we're all together without masks, but this is such a great group of teachers, educators, many of them come from thirty years in industry, or they were a parapro for six years in a classroom before they became an educator in that same classroom. So there's a diverse group of all of them, and they have been just a delight. So here they are, Ms. Kelsey Blue is a special education teacher at North Forsyth High School. She completed with special education P through 12. Mr. Conrad Bishop serves at Gateway Academy as a science educator. Ms. Laura Brooks is a special education teacher in North Forsyth Middle. She was a previous paraprofessional with us who moved into the classroom lead teacher position. Griffin Caracholo completed in science at West Forsyth High School, so he's grade six through 12. Ms. Macy Fletcher completed in marketing, she works at West Forsyth High School. Quentin Foster works at Lakeside Middle, and he is a special education co-teacher. Anna Pong Gali actually finished in two areas, both computer science and engineering and technology, and serves in both areas at Forsyth Central High School in the STEM program.
High demand.
Oh, incredibly high demand, but also just such a good transition for him. He was actually working with our robotics students prior to coming into our program, and that's how we connected with him. Ms. Daphne John, actually same thing, Forsyth Central High School, her background in engineering and technology as well as computer science. Mr. Thomas McCarter, who serves special education students at South Forsyth High School. Mr. Chad Pig, again, special education, serving our children at Denmark High School. Mr. Andrew Robinson, again, math at Denmark High School. Ms. Emma Signa, math and actually special ed, both at Piney Grove Middle. Sydney Skidmore, special education at Whitlow Elementary. Jessica Smith, who served in marketing, she completed six through 12 for Forsyth Central High School. Mr. Wilson, whose background is computer science and had a great career there before coming to us, he completed for six through 12 at West Forsyth High. And Misty Sprayberry, she is a special education teacher at Vicarry Creek Elementary. You might have noticed that she is out of order alphabetically, and there is a good reason for that. Misty is an incredible educator who was a paraprofessional before she moved into her current role, where she still serves at Vicarry Creek. But she just was very much a light, and anytime we get to celebrate our graduates, we want to. So I wanted to read a statement from her principal. This is from Ms. Kristin Readinger, who is sharing a little bit about Misty's journey, and why we're so excited that she's cele, to celebrate her and her completion of the program. So Kristin says, "Misty Sprayberry is a shining example of the very best of our profession. She's relentless in her service to others. If what she's doing isn't working, she'll find another way, and another way, and another way. She's committed to continuous professional learning and improvement. She will never be finished growing. She is a person that loves others selflessly. Her words and her actions are a reflection of her kind and generous heart. She is without fail optimistic and consistently positive." Misty's demeanor and outlook deserve accolades in an average year, but this year, Misty has defeated challenges that make even the strongest among us crumble. Less than halfway into her certification program, Misty was diagnosed with breast cancer. Sadly, it was relatively advanced and would require over a year's worth of treatment, radiation, and chemo. She had multiple surgeries. True to her nature, she took this in stride with fight in her heart and a smile on her face. She battled cancer, worked through our program, and learned to become a virtual special education teacher all at the same time. Misty's students and colleagues would tell you that she never missed a beat, and she Misty's students and colleagues would tell you that she never missed a beat and she never missed an opportunity to love and inspire others. She is and always will be sunshine and she brings light wherever she goes." So we are excited going forward to share that there will be a Forsyth Teacher Academy Sprayberry Sunshine Award that we can award to the candidate that the best represents the light and the courage that Misty exhibited over this past year. And in all we do, we just want to make sure that we create equitable access to effective educators here in Forsyth. We hope our three programs are a way that we support that goal, and we do it not by chance, but by design.
That was inspiring. Started out so nice, a little tearjerker down there.
I wasn't sure I was going to hang in there, but I sure did.
Yeah, I'll say, I remember when we brought this program forward, you know, I was looking very anticipatory at it because this is exactly what we needed, and it's not rocket science. It's common sense to do this, but yet we've turned out many, many good people out of this program. And I've watched one of my neighbors go through it, and it was exciting to see it happen, the fruition of it, and just life kept going. And so we're allowing that opportunity, and I know we're going to need it in CTAE for sure.
Well, Michelle mentioned in her remarks that Dr. Aver was the dean of this, and he certainly deserves a lot of credit for bringing this to Forsyth County schools. And thank you, Beth, for all the work you've done with this program over the years. It's been greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Absolutely. I know I talked to Dr. Aver just this week, or last week it was, about a person who called me who knows that they are not certified and they know how to go through their process. So other than, you know, existing employees, parapros that are in the system and want to work their way up, how do other, these other candidates, is it same kind of thing? They get a phone call, or I get a phone call and they're referring to HR that they, they're not certified? What do they need to do? How are you getting these candidates into this particular program? How are they, how are they coaching them? How's it?
That's a really good question. We do have targeted marketing and also outreach. We go to non-traditional fairs, meaning non-education fairs. If we go to education fairs, chances are 99% of those applicants are going to hold a certificate or be in the process of earning one. So what we do instead, for example, is I have been to the University of North Georgia's Computer Science Fair, where they have their graduates coming out with a computer science degree and trying to invite them into our system. I also attended virtually the AUCC, which is the program that collaborates with the HBCUs in our community, just to try to find any applicants who might be interested, who might have gone to a school that did not have an education program, specific to the areas we serve.
I like that. All right, sounds curious. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have construction update. Mr. Tom Wining.
Good afternoon.
Getting to be in the home stretch, I think.
Yes. So fortunately, we're transitioning from construction to operations, so you don't need to listen to me anymore soon. This is obviously East Forsyth High School, and we're thrilled that Principal Chaney has already moved in with much of his key staff. You know, great job to Brad and Steve with furniture and the follow-on, you know, well-orchestrated operations that happens behind us. Quick view of football, because the fun part of this now is you really see the facility coming to life as spring practice occurs on a daily basis. Various aspects of commissioning, the auditorium, testing out the AV systems now, great sound, great visual. So just a few quick shots. You know, as furniture starts, we're obviously starting in the administration area to allow the key staff in conference room, Principal Chaney's office, and some of the key staff. So in addition to furniture, moving in a flow, we've got information technology doing a great job, well ahead of the curve, security cameras, access controls, all of the follow-on activities occurring. As I described that at East, the same applies to ACE, now complete. A quick view of the media center furniture already in, rotary already held in the auditorium. And you see a little of the volume of the two cafeterias and what Steve and Brad are procuring for the cafeterias. Quick view of Drew's lobby. And moving then towards Performing Arts Center, we're rapidly completing the exterior. And on the interior, you're beginning to see some shots. We're bringing down in a logical, you know, engineered fashion, the scaffolding, which makes this project different than all the others. And you're really beginning to see some of the fine interior finishes in that facility. So that's moving along as well. Similarly, out at Hendrix, Cheryl's Office Furniture moved in, IT, security cameras following. Principal Riddle will move in next week into her office, conference room. So you see those three projects well ahead of the curve. And again, as we saw on Poole's Mill, the significant benefit of getting principals and their key staff in early just makes it a smooth opening. The job that we still do though have under construction, New Hope Elementary School, you see a photo here, structural steel erection rapidly proceeding such that the top-out will be middle of June for our, before our board meeting. We're doing it in the morning before it gets hot. Again, just to refresh your memory, the playfield will be at the southern end and then parking on the northern end. The two-story, we have a significant retaining wall in this area, separating the two-story classrooms in this area, and currently now slab-on-grade for the one-story administration and other elements, building elements. So beyond those major projects, we still have several current projects underway. Out at South Forsyth High School, the turf maintenance building, we have begun site utilities. Denmark CTAE, animal sciences mobilized today. You know, one of the intangible benefits of getting ACE done, we've moved a lot of people in from what would have been some of the 1130, 1140 Hill Center offices, such that we can start demolition early. We've got a tight timeframe on the scheduling of those, and it's just so critical, the checker boarding, knowing we've got registration coming. So that allowed us to get an early jump to start construction earlier, which will result in finishing earlier. And an intangible benefit of that was to use the new ACE facility for that. And then recently, we contracted the three other projects at Little Mill, North Forsyth Middle, and North High with material expediting underway. You know, and as you've heard Brad say, and as Mr. Cleveland said earlier, the huge benefit of getting those projects done, we've got the lion's share of that capital program done, and it alleviates all the challenges that this post-pandemic material supply and material chain, supply chain. So, you know, fortunately, we're in a great position, having a lot of it done.
For the heat, too.
Yeah.
I mean, it's cool to watch the progression of this through time, right? So you can get those little updates, but see the amount of work that's gone into it. For me, I've been watching New Hope be built every day because it's right outside my neighborhood. So I turn it out and I watch it, and that's an old picture, by the way. So it's got more still up. I'll just let you know. I may send you an update once in a while. But it's fun to watch the speed at which they've been operating and watch them construct it and the professional. I mean, I've seen a lot of building projects, and they, the whole site is even professional. So thank you to all your leadership in that area. That always is the dilemma, getting you the photos, you know, when we go fast.
You build them so fast, that's a good problem.
Promise over deliver, right?
We're okay with that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
We're okay with you building too fast. That's a good, that's a good thing. All right. Any other questions? That's great. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any future agenda items, suggestions, or needs? I know that Tom and Wes, you were, Wes wants to do an update soon on some homeless.
Yeah, on his.
So that would probably be.
I'll probably do a drug council update. I'm trying to get a couple of the speakers. I want to go.
June you guys wanted to do it?
I was going to try to do mine at the next meeting, but I'll let you know once I acquire the right photos.
Just let Sandy know when you're ready and we'll get it on the agenda.
And I think Wes was going to try to do it next one, too.
Sure.
Make sure, ask us with that.
Okay.
All right. Is there a motion to go into executive session for personnel and land per the affidavit?
So moved.
Motion by Tom, second by Darla, all in favor?